Welcome to our entertainment before the board meeting tonight. Before we get started, I'd like to point out the artwork on the walls is from Fountain Blue High School. The teacher is under the, is Ms. Cheryl Alack, and we welcome you to please enjoy that after our program. We have a very special program tonight. Abney Elementary School has an Actors Guild, and their principal, Mr. Mike Alford, is so in tune with the arts and the theater world, and he offered several months ago for this group to come and perform. They will, of course, give us a musical interlude to begin the evening. Mr. Brian Donnelly, physical education teacher at Abney, will come and be the emcee. Please welcome Mr. Donnelly.
Good evening, school board members and distinguished guests. I'm Brian Donnelly. I am very proud to present a bit of the arts that we flourish, I believe, our art program flourishes at Abney, and we'd like to start off with some violinists who are under the tutelage of Mr. Jeb Stewart. Ladies and gentlemen.
We do the Suzuki method for elementary at Abney, and we're going to start off with a piece called "Professional Motion" by Dr. Suzuki.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, my guys. That was Ms. Sophia Vu, Ms. Destiny Guillory, and Mr. Brady, and Mr. Aaron Park. So, thank you very much, violinists, and thank you, Mr. Stewart. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about our Actors Guild, why I believe they're going to start setting up. This is a new program that we just started this year at Abney Elementary. We have two separate divisions. We have an older division for, I believe, third, fourth, and fifth grade, and this is the first and second grade actors group. So, we have a performance today. All right, so, our Actors Guild has been run by three extremely talented directors, Ms. Suzanne Cole, Ms. Dame Ombe, and Ms. Marilyn Tate, and so, we are extremely lucky to have them here today. I personally feel like this might be the best thing that we've done in the last couple of years at Abney. I've seen this performance several times. We performed three or four times, and it has been outstanding. So, I really enjoyed it. I believe, without going into it too much, this is, as I said, the younger group of actors at our actor club, but there is one exception, and I want to challenge our distinguished audience to see if you can find the one performer who might be a little bit older than the others. So, if that performer heard me, this might be the last time you guys have seen me. So, that's my hit right here. Also like to say that Ms. Cole's fifth grade students were responsible for putting together the backdrop, right? They had the mountainside and the train roundhouse. So, that was all put together by Ms. Cole's fifth grade students. So, I was extremely impressed by that. I think, for the differences in stage sizes between Abney's stage and the St. Tammany School Board's stage, but it looks like we are wrapping up. You ready? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Suzanne Cole, Ms. Ombe, Ms. Tate, and the Abney Elementary Early Childhood Actors Guild, our younger grades.
And we'd like to welcome you to tonight's performance of "The Little Train." It is based on the novel, or the little story, "The Little Engine That Could." Remember that "I Think I Can, I Think I Can"? This is it. It was adapted as a musical by Virginia Coke Kadula. We hope you enjoy tonight's performance of "The Little Train."
Once upon a time, there's a train. It was a happy little train. While rumbling over the tracks, it was a birthday train.
All aboard!
Chug, 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 chugging on his way. Chugging and a puffing and a chugging and a puffing. He's moving on his way. He goes up and down the mountain to places far away. He's rumbling and a-rumbling and moving night and day. Chug, 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 chugging on his way. Chugging and a puffing and a chugging and a puffing. He's moving on his way. He's moving on his way.
This was the birthday train carrying a jolly little toys. It was carrying a toy show doo with a big sonnet. A doll with black curls, a teddy bear with brown fur and button eyes, and a lion with a wonderful mane, and a clown that can do cartwheels.
Excuse me, but does anyone know where we're going?
We are going over the other side of that big mountain.
Why are we going there?
Because it is birthday time, and we have to present for the girls and boys.
Oh, good. I know they want me, because everyone wants a teddy bear.
The little train rumbles along the tracks, but all of a sudden, the train stops with a jerk. Everybody wonders what is wrong. Did anyone pull the brake cord?
No! We didn't pull anything!
Oh dear, now we're stuck. We won't get over the mountain. I think I'm going to cry.
Oh, cheer up. Maybe someone will come along and help us.
Here comes a train now.
Just then, a shiny new engine appears, and it is pulling some passengers' cars. The clown runs out and waves a flag.
Please stop, please stop, we need help!
Please stop and help us, please stop and help us, please stop and help us. Our engine's broken down, and we must get over the mountain. We must get over the mountain. We must get over the mountain to all the girls and boys.
But the shiny new engine only says...
What? I call you. I don't have time. I have passengers who are in a big hurry!
Help you? I can say no.
I must go to an important meeting.
I'm nervous. I'm just too tired of just, please get me...
We don't want to pull you.
The smoke might get our windows dirty.
Come on, let's go! We just don't have time to help anyone!
I'm always in a hurry, in a hurry, in a hurry, in a hurry, to be on my way. Can't you see I'm in a hurry, in a hurry, in a hurry? So, please move out of my way! I'm always in a hurry, in a hurry, in a hurry, in a hurry, to be on my way. Can't you see I'm in a hurry, in a hurry, in a hurry? So, please move out of my way!
And off goes the shiny new engine. The toys watch the shiny new engine disappear, and they are sad and worried.
Well, I certainly think that was nice.
Oh dear, now we're stuck, and we can't get over the mountain. I think I'm going to cry.
Cheer up, some, maybe another train will come along and help us.
And here comes another one now.
Just then, a big strong engine appears. The clown runs out and waves a flag.
Please stop, please stop, we need help!
Please stop and help us, please stop and help us, please stop and help us. Our engine's broken down, and we must get over the mountain. We must get over the mountain. We must get over the mountain to all the girls and boys.
But the big strong engine is not at all interested in helping the little train.
What? I call you. I only carry big things like cars and lumber.
Help you? I can say no.
Please move, we're taking up a lot of space!
Toys aren't important enough for freight trains.
Come on, let's go! We just don't have time to help anyone!
Can't you see that I'm important, and I only carry freight? I only carry heavy things that have a lot of weight. I never carry little things like boxes full of toys. That's not my business anyhow, those little girls and boys. Can't you see that I'm important, and I only carry freight? I only carry heavy things that have a lot of weight. I never carry little things like boxes full of toys. That's not my business anyhow, those little girls and boys.
And the big strong engine puffs up importantly down the track. Now the toys are really sad and discouraged.
Well, and to think I used to like freight trains.
Oh dear, we're still stuck, and we won't get over the mountain. I think I'm going to cry.
Cheer up. Maybe another train will come along and help us.
And here comes another one now.
Around a bend, around a bend appears a rusty dingy old engine. He looks old and tired. The little toy clown runs out and waves a flag.
Please stop, please stop, we need help!
Please stop and help us, please stop and help us, please stop and help us. Our engine's broken down, and we must get over the mountain. We must get over the mountain. We must get over the mountain to all the girls and boys.
But the rusty dingy old engine just looks tired and says...
I'm so tired and weary, I can't even pull a little train like you. I am so worn and weary, and very, very tired. My wheels are old and cranky, and my whistle doesn't blow. No, I cannot help you. That mountain is too high. I cannot do it, cannot do it, even if I try.
I am so worn and weary, and very, very slow. My wheels are old and rusty, and my whistle doesn't blow. No, I cannot help you. That mountain is too high. I cannot do it, cannot do it, even if I try.
But the rusty dingy old engine just, just slowly rumbles off to the roadhouse.
I go rusty!
Now indeed, the little train is very, very sad, and everyone is ready to cry.
He didn't even try to help us.
Oh dear, now we're, oh dear, now we are really stuck, and we won't get over the mountain, and I know I'm going to cry.
Well, go ahead and cry if it'll make you feel better.
Isn't there anyone else who can help us?
Just then, they all look up and see Little Blue, and he's coming into sight.
Here comes a train, a rolling down the track. Here comes a train with a smokestack on his back. It's the Little Blue engine, and he's right on time. It's the Little Blue engine, and he's right on time. It's the Little Blue engine, and he's right on time.
What's the matter, my friend?
Our engine's broken down, and we must get over the mountain. Can you help us?
Well, I'm not that big, I never rode the mountain before.
Oh, please try, there's no one left to help us.
Well, all right, help me hitch a ride, I'll see what I can do.
And slowly, slowly, they start off. Everybody jumps aboard and begins to sing.
I think I can, I think I can, I know I'm gonna try. I think I can, I think I can, I know it's not too high. I think I can, I think I can, I'll sing this jolly song. I think I can, I think I can, I'll sing it loud and long. We're going over the mountain. We're going over the mountain. We're going over the mountain to all the other side. I thought I could, I thought I could, I tried and tried again. I thought I could, I thought I could, and now I know I can. So, when you see that things are bad, just sing this jolly song. I think I can, I think I can, I'll sing it loud and long.
Let's have a big round of applause for our birthday train. Bright and shiny, train and engine. Big and strong, train and engine. And our favorite, old Rusty. And the savior of the day, Little Blue. One more round of applause for our entire cast of "The Little Train." Thank you, one, again, for allowing us to perform for you. We hope you enjoyed our show.
Thank you so much. That was quite a treat. You can see Mr. Alford is a patron of the arts from the get-go. He did a fabulous job promoting his school, and that's what we appreciate it, Mr. Alford. Thank you so much. I would, I would like to invite the actors in the back. Please don't rip off your costumes. We're going to come back and get a group picture of you with your costumes on in the back. So, when you go back there, gather together, we're going to get a group shot of you, okay? All right. Thank you so much. The board meeting will begin at seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to our May 15th board meeting. Ms. Randolph, would you call the roll for us?
Mrs. Heinz.
Here.
Mr. McGinn. Mr. Durman.
Here.
Mr. Lou.
Here.
Mr. Howell.
Here.
Mrs. Tipton.
Yes.
Mr. Jeter.
Here.
Mrs. Sealy.
Here.
Mrs. Mallett.
Present.
Mr. Bettencourt.
Here.
Mr. Latt.
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Lamar.
Yes.
Mr. Alfred.
Here.
Mrs. Bell Sarian.
Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alfred is now going to lead us in the invocation place. Would you please rise?
Dear Heavenly Father, bless us tonight. We also ask a special blessing on the seniors that are graduating. Be with them. Help them find their destiny and be very good citizens of St. Tammany Parish. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's lead this with a flag.
...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our May meeting is always an exciting meeting because we have a lot of people to recognize this evening, so we are so glad that so many of you are here to join us. And without further ado, do we have any recognition of visitors by board members?
You got a lot of visitors.
Then I'll call on Ms. Peggy Sharp for fundraiser check presentation to Pride and jerseys for Jeremy.
I am very proud tonight to announce the results of our special fundraising day for two very worthy causes, Pride and the Jerseys for Jeremy Fund. On Thursday, April 17th of this year, students and employees were allowed to wear their favorite team jersey for a donation of a dollar or more. All of the money collected will benefit both Pride and the Jeremy Abear Defibrillator Fund. The goal of Pride is to assist in the healthy, drug-free development of the youth and families in the communities they serve. Many of the Pride members are students from our junior highs and high schools, and I would like to recognize a group of them tonight who came with us. Please recognize our Pride students as they stand up. The mission of the Jeremy Abear Defibrillator Fund is to save lives by recognizing the importance of having automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, available in the event of an emergency. You may recall that on September 29th, 2011, Pineview Middle School student Jeremy Abear passed away from sudden cardiac arrest. Jeremy's mother, Ann Abear, began the Jeremy Abear Defibrillator Fund to help ensure that there are AEDs in all of our schools. Proudly tonight, we can say there are 131 AEDs in our schools and offices at this time. Tonight, we have representatives from both organizations to receive their checks. The total that the students and the employees raised was $13,917.86, which translates each organization will receive a nice, big check in the amount of $6,958.93. which translate each organization will receive a nice big check in the amount of $6,958.93. At this time, I would ask Brenda Gier, Patty Beal, and one of our own teachers, Mr. Jeff Palito, to please come to the podium and Mr. Fols will present them with their check.
Um, I just want to thank you guys on behalf of Pride. Pride's been serving St. Tammany Parish for 30 years now. I look around the room and I see so many of our school board employees whose children have come through our program and, um, you know, we just really appreciate this. Uh, we're gonna put this right back into the programs, particularly our Pride troop and, uh, the PA camps that we do in the summer. So again, thank you very much.
In representing the Jeremy Abear Defibrillator Fund, we have Mrs. Ann Abear and her husband Marius Abear. Please come receive your check.
In closing, I would like to say a special thank you to all of our students, parents, and staff members for their extreme generosity in this fundraising effort, as well as the others that we've had throughout the year. They've all been very successful and I think it's a, a long message that we give our students about community service to, um, those who need a, a helping hand and they've done a great job. So thank you to all of the students and employees who have contributed. And I, I have the reels checked. I'll be glad to give you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sharp. And we are very pleased that our students and their families and our employees have contributed to these two very worthwhile groups. Alright, we'll move on now to special recognitions. Our first one is Louisiana State Student of the Year, Superintendent Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. And, um, welcome to everyone that's here tonight. It's always nice to have a full house when everyone is happy to be here. So we appreciate that as well. Uh, as you, as you remember, board members, staff, last month, we recognized Patrick Flanagan as our district and regional student of the year. Tonight, I am proud to share with you that out of 700,000 students in Louisiana, Patrick was one of three chosen to represent the state of Louisiana. And he was chosen as a Louisiana high school student of the year. Patrick, it says he is a senior in Mandeville High. Really, he is a graduate of Mandeville High School. Uh, he has accomplished many things and has many civic involvements. He was one of two Louisiana delegates who participated in the recent US Senate Youth Program. He served as Louisiana Legislative Youth Advisory Council President, Senior Class President, captain of the tennis team, active in youth and government, club and theater, and plans to study political science in college and follow in his mother's footsteps and become a lawyer. Uh, it was a great night to be there, to experience in that, having known Patrick's mom and dad for many years, his dad being a, uh, employee in our school system. And just to be there and experience that with the principal, Bruce Bundy. I can tell you, we were very surprised. If you remember, last year, we had the state winner of the year for the entire state, uh, John Mitchell from Pearl River High. So to have a repeat was pretty nice and, um, very exciting and very surprised. So we want to congratulate Patrick, um, for all the attention and all the good things he's brought to our school system. And I really believe, just in meeting him the last few months and talking to him, that this is just the beginning about what you're gonna hear from Patrick Flanagan and the life that he's gonna live. And I guarantee you, the pin we gave him at graduation, he will wear it with pride and he will represent our school system in many different ways throughout his college career and his professional career. And I'm excited to, um, watch where he goes and the things he does. And everyone in St. Tammany Parish will certainly be pulling for him along the way. So Patrick, come up, let us give you this little certificate. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you so much. Uh, throughout this process, I have to, uh, thank my parents for their support. Uh, Mr. Bundy, uh, he has four kids, but he manages to make it to everything. And Ms. Arabey, who came all the way to Baton Rouge, and Superintendent Fols. Uh, but there were two unsung heroes of this. Uh, my guidance counselor, Coach Sean Esker, who helped me prepare my portfolio and talked me down before every single stage. And Ms. Meredith Mendez, who I would call after every single, uh, stage and she always coached me and guided me through the whole process. So a very special thanks to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Patrick. We're very proud of you. Good luck in the future. Alright, now we'll move on to National Merit Scholarship finalists, Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. You know, one of my favorite sayings, if you're the smartest person in the room, you're probably in the wrong room. Um, the group that I'm getting ready to talk to you about tonight, make sure that we indeed are not the smartest people in the room. Uh, the National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition for recognition and scholarships that began in 1955. High school students entered the National Merit Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship. 1.5 million students take this qualifying test. Out of that group, 50,000 with the highest scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Program. Then, from 1.5 million to 50,000, it goes down to 16,000. High scores are later notified that they qualify as semi-finalists. Those students are the highest-scoring entrants in the state. From that group, 8,000 semi-finalists receive notification of being a finalist and receive a merit scholarship award, which is valued at $2,500. So it started with 1.5 million students taking the test, gets down to 8,000. And out of that 8,000 across the country, 11 of those reside in St. Tammany Parish Public School System. And five of those 11 come from North Shore High School. Uh, allow me to say a few words about each one. We're gonna ask them to stand and then when we're all finished, um, we'll have them come up and get a certificate that we have for them. First up is Andrew Paul Campbell. Is Andrew here? Yes. Okay. Andrew is the son of Scott and Betsy Campbell. Andrew will major in mechanical engineering at Purdue University in the fall. And as you can imagine with these students, with many things going on at the end of the year, so we understand and I'm happy the ones that are here, in other words, we'll get certificates to them. Scott William Terrance Kent. Scott is the son of Christopher and Ladette Kent. Stand up. Come on up. Come on up. Scott has chosen Emory Riddle Aeronautical University for college and he will major in aerospace engineering. Scott, congratulations. Du-Yel Kim. Du-Yel, come on up. You can help me with all these pronunciations in case I mess up. So far, so good?
Yeah.
Yeah, good job. He's the son of Me Jin Lee and the late Dr. Dong Pell Kim. Du-Yel will major in biology or biological sciences this fall at Emory University. Congratulations. Shasha Lee. Shasha is the daughter of Zhang Peng Li and Lu Sun. Yeah. I was working on that all day today. Thank you. Shasha will be enrolled at Columbia University while majoring in industrial engineering. Congratulations. Next up is Lee Francis Weaver. Okay. Lee is the daughter of Bruce and Penny Weaver. Lee will major in biochemistry while attending LSU in the fall. Those are our North Shore groups. Let's give them a round of applause. Next up, from Mandeville High School, we also have five. And first one is Michael Waitus Denham. Michael? Michael is the son of Waitus and Dr. Lori Denham. And Michael will be attending Louisiana State University in the fall and will major in chemical engineering. We got your certificate right here. Morgan Lee Kleiss. Morgan is the daughter of Eric and Debbie Kleiss and she will attend Auburn University and major in animal science. Aaron Zachary Reed. Aaron is the son of Brenton Susan Reed. He will attend Stanford University and major in biomedical engineering. Greta Elise Schellenberger. Greta is the daughter of Kurt and Lauren Schellenberger and she will attend Georgia Tech this fall and she will major in biomedical engineering. Congratulations. Julia River Strickland. Julia is the daughter of Hal and Patricia Strickland and she will attend Baylor University and major in business. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And our 11th finalist is from Lakeshore High School, Kevin Joseph Reiners. Is Kevin here? Kevin is the son of Joan and Barry Reiners and he will be attending Tulane University and majoring in neuroscience. Congratulations. Okay, now I'm gonna ask the parents of those 11 that we recognize. If you're here and you're parent, if you're a parent of this group, please stand up and be recognized. And now administrators for any of their schools, if these students, if you're here, please stand up and be recognized.
What an outstanding accomplishment. We are so pleased to have you all with us this evening and we recognized your academic commitment and wish you the best of luck in everything you pursue. Item number three, Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Character and Citizenship. Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. The Superintendent's Award was created to honor people and programs for showing outstanding character and citizenship. Tonight, we have two award winners that do that on a daily basis. I am proud to announce the winner of the 2013-14 Superintendent's Award is teacher John Wondergem from Folsom Elementary School. Mr. Wondergem is a special education teacher who sees the potential of every child, regardless of their differences. But it's really what he does outside the classroom that shows his above and beyond attitude that earned him this award. Channel 13 put together a video highlighting Mr. Wondergem. Let's take a look.
Alright, Boo. What's our first word? Principal Lisa Bodnar is clear about what John Wondergem brings to her school every day.
He is a committed individual. He is very passionate about teaching. He has a lot of character. So he's perfect for this award because his character epitomizes what a principal would look for in a teacher.
This is awesome handwriting. You did a good job. Give me five.
This responsibility and devotion to children extends out from his own home.
Mr. Wondergem has a large family. He's got four children that he's, they've adopted. And, um, many, all of them are from foster homes. So he has this, this drive to work with the foster children. He wants them to feel good about themselves. He wants them to see what it's like to be a real child in a loving, nurturing environment.
To that end, John is promoting a summer camp for these children.
The Royal Family Kids Camp is a camp for foster children in the summer where they can experience real camp and have fun. They get to experience a real family atmosphere. Mr. Wondergem has, has, uh, raised 15,000-plus dollars for this camp.
What it is, is it's a one-week overnight camp for kids ages seven to 11 in the foster care system. And it is simply like it says, royal family. We want to treat these children like they're royalty. And so we come together for a week, a group of volunteers, and we give them the experience of a lifetime.
As big-hearted and impactful as this is, Mr. Wondergem has taken his love of children a step further.
A few years back, he was a youth minister at his church. And one of his children, or one of the students in the youth group, was struggling with kidney issues. Mr. Wondergem showed his love by donating a kidney. He donated his own kidney to a child who was not his own, not a relative, just a member of his church. And to me, that was amazing.
Here's a kid who's 14 years old, who, you know, we're supposed to be outside playing and having fun and doing, just being young.
Spurred to action by these thoughts, this teacher gave of himself, a noble gesture born of his own beliefs.
I do the things that I do, um, because of the love that God has shown to me and the direction and purpose that he's given me in my life, and also because of my family. You know, my mom and dad have trained me from a very young age that you do what you say you're gonna do. You serve people, you love people, you care about people. I'm surrounded by great staff here at Folsom Elementary. I'm surrounded by a wife, by a church of individuals who support what I do.
Mr. Wondergem is wonderful. He's kind, compassionate, caring. He's big and he has a big heart.
It has been said that goodness is about character, integrity, honesty, kindness, generosity, moral courage, and the like. More than anything else, it is about how we treat other people. If that is the case, then John Wondergem is the epitome of character. Tiger Edwards, Channel 13.
If I could ask Mr. Wondergem to please come forward. Also would like to have his principal, Ms. Lisa Bodnar, who nominated him for this award, come forward. Uh, I know his wife Julie, who is a teacher at Lyne Elementary. Is he here, Julie? Where are you? Congratulations, thank you. And his mom, Debbie, is here as a parent, jumpstart as well. Uh, Mr. Wondergem, you have the perfect name. I'm like watching the videos, like, you're a wonderful guy. You love out, you live out our motto of every child, every day. What a perfect example of every child, every day. So we want to give you this award as a small token of our appreciation for that. And also, we have Capital One Bank is here tonight. They're our sponsor for this award. And Dennis Shakesnight from Capital One is with us and I'm gonna allow him to say a few words and he has a check he wants to present to you as well. But on behalf of the school system and all of our students and our school board members and employees, we thank you for what you do for every child, every day. Congratulations. Mr. Wondergem, I just want to say, we talk about partnerships, we talk about inspiration. You live it every day. Thank you so much for what you do for our students. Thank you for what you do for our community. We appreciate you.
I appreciate this very much. It's, it's always a blessing to be, um, recognized by people for the things that you do. But at the end of the day, this is what we were created for by God. And if we're here to honor God in the way that we live our lives, serving and loving kids is the best thing that we can do. And so it's a privilege to have that opportunity day in and day out to do what I do. So, thank you all.
Uh, second place this year, our finalist for the Superintendent Award was the Principal's Goldfish Club from Abney Elementary School. This group is a group of fourth and fifth graders that began in 2009 with the goals of reaching out to the community through visits to retirement homes, collection drives for those in need, and many other community service projects. Channel 13 captured a little bit of what goes on with the Goldfish Club. Take a look.
What are goldfish? We know they are friendly and have the ability to make us all smile when we see one. But did you know that they are also considered good luck and mercy? But did you know that they are also considered good luck, and many believe that they can bring good fortune to those around them? So what would happen if a bunch of students got together and started a goldfish club? Let's find out.
The Goldfish Club is a group of fourth and fifth grade students who have been selected based on excellent behavior, good grades, good attendance at school, and shown some leadership characteristics. You know, we're a school that practices a fish philosophy, you know, being there and making someone's day, and that's what this club really does. They reach out to the community, they are there for those people that they encounter in, in the community, and they make someone's day every day.
In the classroom, the Goldfish Club works to ensure younger students are eager to read.
We will read, we'll pass out books, we have Great Abney, you know, book giveaway, and we have special guests, including Mr. Fols, the mayor, our chief of police, many school board, senior employees, and folks from central office that will come and read. And the fish serve as escorts, readers, and assist in any way they can, including the actual giving out of the books.
The role of the club expands well beyond the classroom and into the Slidell community.
I can tell you, they really, really are taking away a view that looks at things differently in that they understand what community is.
They do a continual food drive. Every month, they're collecting some sort of food item for the needy. They've done a coat drive, they did a shoe drive of all things, where they collected shoes from students and collected over 150 pairs of shoes, which they donated to the local Habitat for Humanities.
Everywhere they go, the Abney Goldfish Club brings with them good fortune, and the students involved gain invaluable insight about community outreach.
It makes me feel really good because whenever you help people, it's like a warm feeling filling in your heart.
It makes me feel good and happy, and I'm glad that I'm here, and we have good people here.
And for all of these reasons and more, the Abney Goldfish Club has been presented with a Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Character and Citizenship.
I'm very proud of this club, though. The bottom line is, I'm very proud of the kids that are in it because they do what they have to do to promote the goodwill of the school, and they also just do a great job of reaching out to, to the community. And they've, they've gotten a nice reputation throughout South Slidell of being Abney students and being students that care about people.
And now, because of the outstanding students at Abney Elementary, Slidell has its very own School of Goldfish. Rhett Sharp, Channel 13.
Since this is the Principal's Club, I would like to ask their principal, Mr. Mike Alford, to come forward, and also the club sponsor, cafeteria manager, Ms. Debbie Davis, if both of those would come forward. And I also know we have a couple student representatives with us, if they'd come up as well. They did a great job on the video. Y'all come on up. Good job. A lot of goldfish. Y'all swimming all over the place. All right, let's turn this way and get a picture of them. Can everybody squeeze? All right, who's speaking? I was just kidding.
Well, the Goldfish Club is a nice group of kids who do nice things for our community, and it's a really fun thing to do, and I'm glad that I'm a part of it.
Yeah, this group is definitely an outstanding group of young people who have learned the value of serving in the community. I'm very proud of them. I'm also very proud of the person who really sponsors them and does so much work, Mrs. Deborah Davis. Mrs. Deborah Davis, you know, serves also as our cafeteria manager, which is, she does an outstanding job. But this job, this little sponsorship is a job of love and passion. She gets so much satisfaction from teaching these kids the value of serving the community. So this is really about her, too.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Fols for recognizing these children and all they do. I'm just along for the ride. And Mr. Alford, thank you. Last but not least, my husband, who is our photographer, driver, courier, and, and a great help. Couldn't do it without them. Thank you.
Oh, we got the check. Hold on. Dennis, we got a check for y'all. Miss Robinson, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Fantastic job. Thank you so much for really growing the leaders of tomorrow. And I know I have a new perspective at home when I look at that aquarium. I got two goldfish sitting in there. I'm going to think about the great things that these children are doing, and it's because of you and because of Ms. Davis. So thank you so much. You know, our theme this year is working together for success, and I can't think of a better two examples of doing that as well as the work with Capital One that supports this program and this scholarship and this program that goes with it. So we thank Capital One, and we thank the two schools that were recognized, and congratulate them both very much.
Thank you very much for being here and sharing that information with us. It's just wonderful. Capital One Scholarship recipients, Mr. Fols.
Thank you. Capital One provides opportunities for children and youth to access and excel in education and enrichment activities that provide for future successes. Areas of investment include advancing teacher effectiveness, increasing in family engagement, and supporting students' academic and basic needs. As you've already met, Dennis Shakesnight is here, district manager of Capital One. Through Capital One Scholarship Program, they are awarding two $5,000 scholarships named Investing for Good. The first scholarship recipient is Nicholas Williams from Salmon High School. Nicholas, come on up, buddy. Nicholas is here tonight with his guardians, Joseph and Mello Pack. Where are they? Thank y'all for being here. He's also joined tonight by his principal, Terry Wartman. Terry's right there in the back. Thank you for being here. Nicholas has been involved, very involved with clubs at Salmon High School. He's acted in the Beta Club, National Honor Society, Interact Club. Also, in his senior year, he collected cans for the food drive, participated in Toys for Tots, sings in his church youth choir, and is a member of Sigma Beta Club. He also works after-school with the 21st Century Program tutoring elementary students from Brock Elementary. With all these accomplishments, Nicholas has maintained a 4.1818 GPA. You always know when they rounded out four different numbers, that's a strong GPA. Nicholas said in his essay, "So there I was, parentless, before the age of 16. The way I saw it, I had two choices. I could have easily shut myself off from the rest of the world and done anything under the sun, or I continued to grow into the man that would have made my parents proud to call me their son. I chose the latter." St. Tammany Parish Public School System is proud that you chose the latter, and we congratulate you, Mr. Nicholas Williams, for your Capital One Scholarship. Here's your certificate, and we're going to ask Mr. Dennis to come up and present your check to you. Congratulations. Nick, on behalf of all of the associates of Capital One Bank, we want to thank you for your contributions to our community and to your fellow students. Not only have you excelled, but you've helped others, and with that true partnership, that's going to set you up for success in life. And I know I'm looking at one of the future leaders in front of us, and I'm proud to be able to tell your story to my two boys at home, because I know they would, they're going to live the same values that you've lived, and you're going to make everybody here proud. Congratulations. Our second recipient is Margaret Robinson from Lakeshore High. Margaret, come on up. She's here tonight with her mom, Renee. Thank you for being here. And her principal, Dr. Jean Wagner. Thank you for being here. Margaret is ranked in the top 3% of her graduating class. She has a 4.58 GPA and a 27 on ACT. She has challenged herself academically through AP, honors, and dual enrollment classes. Her list of clubs, organizations, honors are extensive. Here's a highlight of a few. She is a first responder and first aid certified, senior president of the National Honor Society, student council member, Mu Alpha Theta charter membership, and student government member. She received a divorcee letter in both dance and golf. Margaret of dance and golf. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
Margaret is a life group leader, church faith and action team, elementary K kids club volunteer, and a national league of junior cotillion's assistant. And with all of her involvement, she's also an after-school babysitter tutor for her neighbor. Her principal, Dr. Wagner, says of Margaret, "She possesses high moral character, serves as a school leader, and a positive role model for her peers." I congratulate and thank you, Margaret, for everything you've done. We're excited about what the future holds for you. We have this certificate for you, and then Mr. Dennis has a check. Margaret, congratulations, and thank you for being such a great representative of St. Tammany Parish Schools. You are going to do well because you were so well-rounded, and you excelled with everything, and you just jumped into it with two feet. So we know you're going to grow, grow into be a great leader, and we look forward to hearing great things from you in the future. Congratulations. Superintendent Fols, if I may, I would just like to thank you, thank the entire board, and thank all of the employees of St. Tammany Parish School System. We, we consider ourselves a strong partner of education within St. Tammany Parish. We have many of our associates that live and work right here in this local community and whose children benefit from your dedication and your commitment. We will build a strong community, and it's because of each and every one of you. So thank you so much, and thank you for allowing us to partner with you year in and year out to recognize these excellent teams and these excellent individuals. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations to those two scholarship winners, Nicholas and Margaret, and to our Capital One sponsors. Thank you so much. We are so pleased to have that partnership with you. Presidential Award for Excellence in Science Teaching, Mr. Fols.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Tonight, I am extremely proud to announce that Mandy Warren, who teaches fourth grade at Lake Harbor, is the latest recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. You probably recognize Mandy because she is also the 2013 Louisiana Middle School Teacher of the Year. Mandy received a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation and traveled to Washington, DC to receive her award at a special awards ceremony. Channel 13 has produced a video highlighting Mandy and her award.
Boys and girls, you can tell me what we've been learning about in science.
What do you get when you combine a talented and dynamic science teacher, a classroom of eager students, and one who has a family legacy of winning awards for teaching science? You get Mandy Warren, a fourth-grade teacher at Lake Harbor Middle School. Ms. Warren is the 14th teacher in St. Tammany Parish to receive the nation's most prestigious honor given to math and science teachers, the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching.
When I found out about the award, just in shock. It was actually a very long process. I was waiting for about a year and a half to find out if I won. So I would check the website, nothing, check the website, nothing, and then one day it was just there, and I just, I couldn't believe it. Very, very honoring.
And this well-deserved honor is a result of Mandy Warren's enthusiasm and skill at taking science concepts and teaching them to her students in an exciting and hands-on way.
When I'm playing in science, I first try to think, is this something relevant? Is this something meaningful to them that they need to know? Because oftentimes, they ask, why am I learning this? So once that component's there, I try to make that concept as hands-on as possible. When they can experience the lesson, when they can get their hands on it, it really hits home, and they understand that concept.
It's Warren's ability to not only teach the science concepts, but to do so with enthusiasm and high energy that Principal Susan Patan appreciates.
She's just an awesome teacher who brings excitement to her classroom every day. She always integrates the math and the science into her science lessons, and the kids are just happy every day to be in her classroom.
Collaborative learning, exciting lessons that integrate science, math, and technology, enthusiastic teaching based on best practices, all reasons why St. Tammany Parish Public Schools has dominated this national award since its inception in 1983. Mandy Warren follows 13 other educators from St. Tammany Parish Public Schools who have earned this national recognition for teaching excellence, serving as models for their colleagues, inspiration to their communities, and leaders in the teaching of mathematics and science education. Thus, it is with great pride that we congratulate Mandy Warren as the latest recipient of the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. We also congratulate those educators that established and furthered this legacy that has inspired, supported, and led the way for future teachers to shine.
Science rocks!
Melody Swang, Channel 13.
Mandy, come on up, and as you may have heard, and you saw the list of the amazing teachers that went through the group there and who's who of teachers in our parish, and one of them happened to be her mom, Kim Wood, who won the same award in 1995. Kim, congratulations. And I know Mandy has two daughters, so I'm going to go ahead and say it right now. One of those two in about 20 years will be up here, and somebody other than me will be giving them. Pete will still be here. He'll give them an award in 20 years from now, but we congratulate you.
Thank you so much. This was an amazing award to win, but I wouldn't be here without everyone here, my students, my principal, all of my colleagues, and of course, my, my family. So thank you so much.
Ms. Heinz, if I could, you know, last week, we did eight graduations in eight days, and then we have a night like this as well. And it just reminds you of the many, many, many talented employees, students, teachers, and others that we have in our school system. And there are opportunities like this that make you appreciate being in St. Tammany Parish and our public school system, and the 28, 2900 students that we graduated last week. As I told someone the other day, the future is very bright when you see these students and what they've accomplished. So we congratulate the ones tonight, we congratulate our graduates from last week, and we're excited about the opportunities they have, and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to recognize all these people tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fols. Next, we have Covington High School's state and national powerlifting titles. Mr. Kevin Derusch.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Fols, tonight, it's my honor to highlight and congratulate the Covington High School Boys Powerlifting Team. From March 28 through March 30, the Covington High School Boys Powerlifting Team capped off an exceptional season by winning the 2014 USA Powerlifting National Championship in Colleen, Texas. Under the guidance of head coach John Burford and assistant coach Glenn Salter, the Lions also won the regional powerlifting meet and the state championship meet at West Monroe High School on March 22 in route to their national championship. The team was led by a number of lifters, including Scott Revere, Tyron Garrett, Chance Barney, and Josh Bickham, who were all regional and state champions in their weight class, while Sean Warren, Draven Collins, Colt Grove, Jathan Contrair finished in the top three in the regional and state meets. Josh Bickham broke all the state records at the state championship meet for the 198-pound weight class. He recorded lifts of 660 pounds in the squat, 420 pounds on the bench, and 725 pounds with a deadlift for a total of 1,805 pounds. That's a lot. At the national championships in Colleen, Josh set two national records for his weight class with a 651-pound squat and a 700-pound deadlift. He repeated as national champion in his class. He repeated as national champion in his class and was named the most valuable lifter at the meet. Powerlifting is a sport that, you know, you can't hide from hard work. Every practice is spent pushing, pulling, lifting weights, and all the while emphasizing fundamentals, safety, technique, and strength. These dedicated young men have worked extremely hard to become national champions. Channel 13 has put together a video that I'd like to share with you now.
Take a young coach with some vigor.
It's my first year as the head coach. I love coaching the kids, you know, and through four years as an assistant, you know, I just, I love it.
Throw in some enthusiasm.
Going into this year, we've... This was the best we've gone into a year in all of my five years here, but with each year, you don't know what other teams are coming with.
Take your able-bodied team to the state meet.
The boys, they had probably the smoothest meet, you know, as far as making attempts that I've ever been a part of. So, it was really a smooth meet. They did, everybody did what they were supposed to.
Get a big lift from junior Josh Bickham.
What Josh did is off the curve. It's unbelievable, the numbers that he put up, a 1,760-pound total. It's just, it's off the charts. That's why he had every record there is. We've never seen a kid in that weight class lift that much weight before in state Louisiana.
Josh, you know, he's just, he's got, he's just an amazing athlete, just God-given strength, but he's also, he's very humble, he works hard, you know, he pushes himself.
The goal that I set was I wanted to be the best, you know, in my weight class at what I do, and that was my only goal. I wanted to break records.
Mix that all up and use that recipe to capture a state title.
All eight guys that we took to state all made it on the podium, so that they all made top three, put us over the hump to win state.
Then take that brawn to Colleen, Texas, and face down the five-time defending champion Whitnall, Wisconsin team. Flex your muscles, then sit back and await the final totals.
You know, they were calling the third place, the second place, and I'm like, dang, they haven't called us yet. I'm like, oh, we did it, we did it. You know, we're first place, national champion.
You know, finally, once they called Covington High as the national champions, that's when, that's when it really hit home, you know, kind of the celebration started.
And you have a national championship to be proud of.
To keep them focused and to get that team to go to nationals and be able to compete against a team like that and beat them is a huge, huge undertaking, and, you know, we're extremely proud of those guys for representing St. Tammany Parish the way they did on a national level and going out and winning a national championship.
This is the first state championship that our school has had since 1984. First-ever national championship in team sports in school history. So, yeah, it's an exciting time for us here at the school, for these outstanding young men and coaches, and the entire community.
Tiger Edwards, Channel 13.
At this time, it's with tremendous pride that I introduce Coach John Burford to say a few words and introduce his state and national champions.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the board. It's a great opportunity, allowing us to be here today and getting recognized, which these kids truly deserve. Before that, I would like to first say some thank yous to the administration, who, in my first year as head coach, it's been a trying year as far as from a paperwork standpoint. The parents have been tremendous, you know, I couldn't have done it without them. We've had great support, and then also, just, I'd also like to take a minute just to thank a certain individual who's very important in my life, whether he knows it or not. He is very, he has had a very profound impact on my life. He was, he was my coach, and he's a big reason that I'm a coach today. Coach Jabia, thank you. These young men, they're, you know, I've said it before, they represent a team in the truest sense, you know, they, they work hard, they all have a common goal, and they, they really, they lift for each other, you know, they lift for themselves, but as much as, at the national meet, I had to tell them to get off their feet, you know, so they wouldn't be wore out for the next day, but they just, they had to support each other, and it's truly remarkable. And I'd like to introduce them now. I'm just gonna go in kind of a random order, basically just kind of how they're sitting. Draven Collins, he's, he got second place at state and sixth at nationals. Colt Groh, he's got third at state and fifth at nationals. Josh Bickham, first every time he lifted. Tyron Garrett, first at state, third at nationals. Shawn Warren, third at state and fourth at nationals. Now, my two seniors who we're gonna truly miss, Jathan Katraer, third at state and fourth at nationals. Scott Revere, third at state and third at nationals. First at state, I'm sorry. And I'd also like to thank my assistant coach Glenn Salter, who couldn't be here today, and then also Senior Chance Barney, who got first at state and second at nationals, but he also cannot be here. So, congratulations, guys.
I don't know if you caught that, he didn't introduce a whole lot of seniors either, so that's good. The state and national championship is an effort of so many people, the coaches, staff, students, but also the parents, and parents who put in many, many hours supporting this team. Parents, please stand up and, if you can, be recognized for your efforts. And of course, Coach Burford, he mentioned this as well, the program also has tremendous support from Covington High School administration. Principal Ms. Rosalyn Hanson is here representing Covington High, as well as her assistants, Ms. Mizell and Dr. DeRoche, if they would stand up, please, and be recognized. And thank you. Let's give one more big round of applause for these national champions, please. And now, we have Mr. Mike Dermon, who will read a resolution.
Thank you, Kevin. First off, I gotta admit, I've been on the board almost 12 years, and I know we've done a lot of state championships, honored them at our board meetings. I don't know how many national champions we've actually honored, so you're in a very, very rare group, so congratulations, and from one old line to a bunch of young ones, great job. It gives me a great pleasure to offer up this resolution, whereas the Covington High School Boys Powerlifting Team won the 2014 USA Powerlifting High School National Championship in Colleen, Texas, and whereas the team won the regional, state, and national championships en route to an undefeated season, and whereas first-year coach John Burford and assistant coach Glenn Salter led the team to capture the first state championship for the powerlifting program and the first-ever national title for Covington High School, and whereas the individual team members broke 10 state records and three national records with Scott Revere, Tyron Garrett, Josh Bickham, Chance Barney, winning individual regional and state championships, with Shawn Warner, Draven Collins, Colt Groh, and Jethan Katraer finishing in the top three at the regional and state meets, and whereas, on his way to winning his second consecutive individual national championship, Josh Bickham broke every record in the 198-pound weight class at the state meet, topped the national squat and deadlift records, and was named the national meet's most outstanding lifter, and whereas, the members of the Covington High Boys Powerlifting Team have demonstrated teamwork, sportsmanship, and character, which have brought pride to their team, their families, Covington High School, and the St. Tammany Parish Public School System. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the St. Tammany Parish School Board acknowledge and congratulate Covington High School Principal Rosalyn Hanson, Coach John Burford, I'm sorry, Assistant Coach Glenn Salter, and especially the team members for their outstanding season that led to winning the 2014 state championship and the 2014 USA Powerlifting High School National Championship. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the board, with a copy being sent to all schools within the school system to post as a sign of congratulations to Covington High School, and I so move.
Thank you, Mr. Dermon. We have a motion, we have a unanimous second. Do we have any comments from the board? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Now, I'm going to call on Mr. Jabia for his school board member service recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, board members. As we were preparing for this year's presentation of service award pins that we give out next month, we noticed an oversight that should have been done last year, so tonight, I am very honored and pleased to recognize Mr. Jack Loop for his 35 years of service, now gonna be 36, but congratulations, Jack, and I have a couple of pins for you. I brought an extra one. I know you're getting up in your age, and you may lose it, so I got you an extra one. So, if you could step down, I'd like to get a picture with you, Jack.
I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting that it would be a night of celebration, and as you can see, we've honored some very worthwhile organizations, and we've had excitement regarding teachers, our scholars, our athletes, we've had state and national recognitions. So, at this time, I'd like to ask the board and the staff to stand up and give this group a great round of applause, very well deserved. Thank you all very much for being with us. All right, we'll move on to public comment. We had no one sign up for our five minutes, we had no one sign up for our three minutes. We'll move on to agenda items. The first one is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on April 10th, 2014, to have a motion to accept those minutes.
Aye, aye.
Motion by Mr. Jeter, a second by Ms. Sealy. Do we have any comments from board members? Any comments from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, abstain from Ms. Belisario. Thank you very much. That brings us to item B, which is appropriate retirement resolutions for certificated personnel, and this is continuing celebration, and all of these teachers have done such a great job for us, and we appreciate that, and let me read now the list that is retiring this year. Beryl E. Hoffman, Beatah Springs Elementary, 28.81 years, 20.81 years in St. Tammany Parish. Teresa W. Dennis, Abney Elementary, 32.50 years, 31.50 years, St. Tammany Parish. Cheryl A. Livingston, Alton Elementary, 34 years, 25 years in St. Tammany Parish. KP Narcisse, Bayou Locom Middle, 30.76 years, 29.89 years in St. Tammany Parish. Heidi M. Berthelot, Bayou Woods Elementary, 32.99 years, 23.83 years in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia L. Paquette, Bonnie Cole Elementary, 33 years, 29 years in St. Tammany Parish. Denise A. Abody Smith, Boyette Junior High, 10.06 years, five years, St. Tammany Parish. John J. Raymond, Boyette Junior, 28 years, 21 years, St. Tammany Parish. Judy E. Oub, Brock Elementary, 15.50 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Andrew A. Monaleon, Carolyn Park Middle, 40 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Darnell N. Boudreaux, Clearwood Junior High, 42.44 years, 33.44 years, St. Tammany Parish. Teraz E. Williams, Clearwood Junior High, 36.73 years, 8.49 years, nine years, St. Tammany Parish. Patricia T. Brandt, Covington Elementary, 21.50 years, 15.50 years, St. Tammany Parish. Roland E. Huey Junior, Covington High, 34.58 years, 24 years, St. Tammany Parish. Dolores R. Modwell, Covington High, 29.93 years, 3.93 years, St. Tammany Parish. Mary Ann W. Smith, Educational Center, 36.42 years, 21 years, St. Tammany Parish. Kimberly S. Wood, Educational Center, 33.48 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Congratulations. Tyrone A. Callahan, Fifth Ward Junior High, 44 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Judy A. Cambry, Florida Avenue Elementary, 24 years, 20 years, St. Tammany Parish. Margaret M. Waterson, Folsom Elementary, 36.45 years, 28 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Michael L. Levine, Lavine, I'm sorry, the third, Fountain Blue High, 13.76 years, five years, in St. Tammany Parish. Jerry W. Taylor, Fountain Blue High, 20 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Jesus M. Gutierrez, Fountain Blue Junior High, 35 years, 22 years, St. Tammany Parish. Pamela M. Flynn, Harrison Curriculum Center, 39.43 years, 28.99 years, St. Tammany Parish. Jacqueline B. Ward, Harrison Curriculum Center, 37.91 years, 22 years, St. Tammany Parish. Alice C. Fashion, Honey Island Elementary, 24 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Barbara M. Dooley, Lake Harbor Middle, 33.28 years, 21 years, St. Tammany Parish. Susan T. Dos, Lake Harbor Middle, 36.27 years, 13.38 years, St. Tammany Parish. Susan D. Flockton, Lee Road Junior High, 20 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Thomas M. Seager, Lee Road Junior High, 34 years, 18 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Sabrina H. Audabert, Little Oak Middle, 25.95 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Ann T. Hustler, Little Oak Middle, 20.50 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Sheila F. Logedes, Little Oak Middle, 22.50 years, 20 years, St. Tammany Parish. Ann D. Beater, Lion Elementary, 33 years, 23 years, St. Tammany Parish. Ann D. Beater, Lion Elementary, 33 years, 23 years, St. Tammany Parish. Eugene J. Scramusa, Lion Elementary, 33.64 years, 17 years, St. Tammany Parish. Mary D. Thomas, Madisonville Elementary, 29 years, 25 years, St. Tammany Parish. Rhonda P. Gutsu, Magnolia Trace Elementary, 20.59 years, 3.88 years, St. Tammany Parish. Mary S. Dempsey, Mandeville Elementary, 28.03 years, 17.7 years, St. Tammany Parish. James C. McDonald, Mandeville High, 23.33 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Victoria L. Olson, Mandeville High, 27.39 years, 19 years, St. Tammany Parish. Martin A. Nichols, Mandeville Junior High, 30 years, 21 years, St. Tammany Parish. Ann C. Stocker, Mandeville Junior High, 31.50 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Bonnie B. Bataglia, Mandeville Middle, 17.21 years, eight years, St. Tammany Parish. Cynthia B. Hargrove, Mandeville Middle, 24.15 years, 22.74 years, St. Tammany Parish. Ellen J. Marino, Mandeville Middle, 38 years, 24 years, St. Tammany Parish. Roxanne McCracken, Marigny Elementary, 33.34 years, 21 years, St. Tammany Parish. Deborah H. Nick, Mayfield Elementary, 38.24 years, 35.44 years, St. Tammany Parish. Lucille P. Ayers, Monaleon Junior High, 16 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Chris M. Sebold, North Shore High, 21.78 years, 19 years, St. Tammany Parish. Gloria T. Van Zant, North Shore High, 38.50 years, 31 years, St. Tammany Parish. Jerry O. Mendo, Pearl River High, 25 years, all St. Tammany Parish. Rebecca J. Bryant, Pineview Middle, 27.50 years, 22 years, St. Tammany Parish. Julie T. Shang, Pitcher Junior High, 24.58 years, 8.51 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Anna A. Carroll, Ponchatrain Elementary, 37.24 years, 28 years, St. Tammany Parish. Denise L. Contagno, Ponchatrain Elementary, 39.15 years, eight years, St. Tammany Parish. Catherine K. Lot, Ponchatrain Elementary, 35.15 years, 23.36 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Sandra B. Simon, Ponchatrain Elementary, 37.27 years, 18 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Cheryl C. Vandam, Ponchatrain Elementary, 34.44 years, 31 years, St. Tammany Parish. Jessie B. Howard, St. Tammany Junior High, 38.18 years, nine years, St. Tammany Parish. Deborah M. Touche, St. Tammany Junior High, 35.50 years, 25 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Carrie F. Turner, St. Tammany Junior High, 22.02 years, seven years, in St. Tammany Parish. Cindy S. Kemp, Salmon High, 12 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. William L. Morris, Salmon High, 41 years, 29 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia A. Hart, Slidell High, 18 years, 17 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Anna M. Robertson, Slidell High, 33.74 years, nine years, in St. Tammany Parish. Deborah D. Voss, Slidell High, 21.36 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Mary K. White, Slidell High, 36.30 years, 11 years, in St. Tammany Parish. David J. Sykes, Slidell Junior High, 25 years, 24 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Cheryl A. DeLupe, Sixth Ward Elementary, 33.24 years, 28.24 years, St. Tammany Parish. Deborah S. Mendo, Student Health Services, 24 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Barbara M. Pentegrass, Student Health Services, 19.34 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Joel M. Childress, Chafunkta Middle, 35 years, 16 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Hallie A. Glenn, Chafunkta Middle, 23 years, 16 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Janice F. Mistis, Chafunkta Middle, 37 years, 23 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia S. Connor, Whispering Forest Elementary, 44.44 years, 36 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Christie F. Quave, Whispering Forest Elementary, 22.11 years, 19 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Ellen S. Parker, Woodlake Elementary, 40 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Jane C. Stratton, Woodlake Elementary, 42.50 years, 28 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Mullott, we have a motion. Second by Mr. Dermon.
Can we do a unanimous second?
I think so. I think that's in order.
You can do those for us.
A unanimous second. All right, do we have any comments from the board? Mr. Jabia, do you have that number of years for us?
I do. There were 78 on the list tonight for a total of 2,332.49 years.
Wow. That's amazing. Great years of service. Do we have any comments from the public? All those, absolutely. All right, let's vote now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. Item C is appropriate retirement resolutions for the following non-certificated personnel subsequent to April 10, 2014. Not quite such a long list. Dionne D. Boudreaux, Abita Springs Middle, 19.28 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Adele B. Deal, Bonnie E. Cole Elementary, 25.25 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Sheila M. Morrison, Bonnie E. Cole Elementary, 20 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Patricia M. Zarang, Brock Elementary, 20.22 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Judy P. Alsop, Carolyn Park Middle, 20.89 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Calvin Johnson Junior, Covington High, 23.86 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Rhonda O. Spinks, Covington High, 31 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Erlene H. Sorano, Cypress Cove Elementary, 18.47 years, in St. Tammany Parish. Paula M. Guzman, Fifth Ward Junior High, 9.70 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Donald D. Caserta Senior, Transportation Center, 11.56 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. Kenneth J. Penton, Transportation Center, 15 years, all in St. Tammany Parish. And do I have a motion to accept the retirement resolutions for the non-certificated personnel? I have a motion by Mr. Alfred, a second by Mr. Betancourt. Do we have any comments from board members? Mr. Jabia, would you care to share those years with us?
I would. There's 11 on this list for a total of 215.23 years, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dermon and Brandon. They meet with each one of these. That's almost 90 people that they've met with to help them with their paperwork and prepare them to start their retirement service, so I thank them for that.
We do appreciate that, and we certainly hope that they all enjoy their retirement service. Do we have any other comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so ordered. All right, that brings us to item D on our agenda, which is the announcement of Assistant Principal Carolyn Park Middle School. Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Tonight, board members, I'm happy to recognize and introduce to you the new Assistant Principal at Carolyn Park Middle School, Ms. Tamika Smith.
It's with great pleasure and gratitude that I accept this appointment. I would like to take a moment to recognize several administrative teams who played an integral part in my journey toward this leadership role. Clearwood Junior High, Mr. Bennett and Ms. Camout, Slidell Junior, Mr. Mackin, and of course Pineview Middle, Ms. Coombs, and also my Pineview family who's here tonight. Thank you to our St. Tammany Parish leaders, Mr. Foles, Ms. Araby, and Mr. Jabia for this wonderful opportunity. Although I am grateful for being selected parishwide this year, it's good to find a permanent home. I'm looking forward to working with Mr. Patrick Mallory and all Carolyn Park stakeholders. I am confident our Eagles will soar and honored to service our children in the Slidell community. Thank you.
And Ms. Smith, Ms. Smith, Mr. Womack has a presentation.
Want to tell you how happy I am that you and Patrick Mallory will be a winning team. And while I subscribe to the same thought that Mr. Foles does, that a school is a whole lot more than a letter grade, still, if at some point Carolyn Park is an A school, what that means then is that the children of Carolyn Park are going to be the benefactors of that. So I look forward to seeing you and Mr. Mallory do some fine work together. I hope you enjoy reading because I have a little something here for you from the school system.
Thank you very much.
I'm thrilled that you're the new Assistant Principal.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Womack. Our next one is announcement of the Assistant Principal for Covington High School, Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce to you Mr. Paul Moulay as the new Assistant Principal of Covington High School.
Thank you, Mr. Foles, Ms. Heintz, school board members, Ms. Araby, Mr. Jabia, and central office staff. I would like to thank you for appointing me Assistant Principal of Covington High School. This is a huge honor. The St. Tammany Parish school system places high emphasis on professionalism and academic success. I will strive to meet and exceed these expectations. I would also like to thank Rosalyn Hanson and Raphael Tillman. Without their guidance and support, this opportunity would not have been possible. To my Pitcher family, the experiences I've received the past 10 years have molded me into the person I am today. You have given me fond memories, ones that I will never forget. To the CHS staff, thank you for your kind words and welcome me into your family. I look forward to working with each of you in accomplishing our goals. To my support system at home, my wife, Yvette, daughters Chloe and Bella, my parents and in-laws, thank you for your endless encouragement and your continued support. The community of Covington holds a special place in my heart. Knowing that I will play a role in helping to shape the future of this community is humbling. I look forward to this great opportunity and can't wait to get started. Go Lions!
Mr. Malier, Mr. Dermon has something to present to you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Got to get you one of these lion ties, man. That's what you got to have. You got to have that lion pride. Look, on behalf of District III and the Covington High learning community, we're really proud to have you with us, and congratulations. And I know you got a lot of spare time, so we got this book for you to read, "Schools Can't Do It Alone." So on behalf of the board and the administration here, congratulations and good luck and do us a great job, buddy. Thank you.
Next, we have the announcement for Assistant Principal of Lake Shore High, Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce to you Mrs. Jennifer Alaman, the new Assistant Principal of Lake Shore High.
Hi, I'd like to thank the board and Superintendent Foles for this appointment. I am truly honored to have this appointment and continue on at Lake Shore. Being a teacher was truly an honor, but also being Assistant Principal and being able to work with Dr. Wagner and the rest of the administrative staff, the teachers, this staff, my students, and also their families, I am truly blessed to be able to work with all of these people. Again, I thank you, and I truly look forward to all the hard work and all the long hours with Dr. Wagner. Again, thank you very much.
And Mr. Harrell has a presentation for you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell.
The fifth district consist of Abita Springs Elementary, Fifth Ward Junior High, and Lake Shore. For me and all the board members and superintendent, we wish you the very best. We asked you to give you this book to read, and just encourage, look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
We now have the announcement of the Assistant Principal for Ponchatrain Elementary School, Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Tonight, I'm happy to introduce to you the new Assistant Principal of Ponchatrain Elementary, Ms. Andrea Hyman.
I would like to thank you, Mr. Foles, and all the school board members for giving me this opportunity to work at Ponchatrain. I have appreciated my time at Lancaster as I am now. Ms. Welch has taught me many things. We've had many sleepless nights there. I will miss her greatly, and I have learned so much through her. I appreciate the opportunity to continue on my journey with my career and look forward to my time with Ms. Thomas, and look forward to some more sleepless nights with her. And I appreciate everything I have had and everywhere I'm going with this, and I want to just thank everyone for that.
Mr. Henigan's not here this evening to present you this on behalf of the schools in District One, but since you're going from District Two to District One, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So enjoy the books.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we have the announcement of Assistant Principal for Sixth Ward Elementary School, Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. I'm happy to introduce to the board tonight the new Assistant Principal of Sixth Ward, Mr. Brian Herstes.
Good evening, Superintendent Foles, Ms. Araby, Ms. Jabia, Ms. Sealy, distinguished members of the board. I'm truly honored to accept the position of Assistant Principal at Sixth Ward Elementary. I greatly appreciate this opportunity, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your confidence in me. I am excited to move on to the next phase in my career so that I may better serve St. Tammany Parish in an administrative capacity. While I have worked extremely hard to prepare myself for this new role, without the guidance of my previous administration led by Mr. DeCarlo, and the knowledge gained from the many professional teachers and staff members at St. Tammany Junior High, I would not be ready to stand here before you and accept this position. I am eager to join my new Sixth Ward family, and I am grateful to be able to learn from Dr. Birnacki, who has already welcomed me very graciously to her school. Finally, I'd like to express my sincerest thanks to my wife, Megan, for her unwavering and unconditional love and support. Thank you all.
On behalf of District Eight, which includes Creekside Junior High, Pearl River High, and Sixth Ward Elementary, we congratulate you on your appointed position. And with that, we have a little gift for you. It's a book by Jamie Volmer, "Schools Cannot Do It Alone." And on behalf of us Superintendent Foles and fellow board members, we wish you the very best in your position.
Thank you so much.
And we welcome you into our community and look forward to working with you.
I look forward to it.
Thank you, Ms. Sealy. Now we have the announcement of the Assistant Principal for Whispering Forest Elementary School, Mr. Foles.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz. Our last appointment tonight, I'm happy to introduce to you the new Assistant Principal of Whispering Forest, Mrs. Mimi Leonard. new Assistant Principal of Whispering Forest, Mrs. Mimi Leonard.
Thank you, Superintendent Foles, President Heintz, Ms. Araby, and Mr. Jabia, along with all the school board members for this appointment. I would also like to thank my husband, Jerry, and my children Samantha and LJ, for their support on my journey into this, into administration, I could not have done it without them. Being a teacher in Saint Tammany Parish for the last twenty-four years, I've been able to work with some outstanding administrators and teachers and friends. My first job was with Mr. Ray Sibley at Bayla Combe, where I learned strong leadership skills. I then moved to Cypress Cove, my friend's right there, and worked with the most supportive administration, with Tassie Wall, Lisa Dial, April Whitfield, and Arlene Sealy. If it wasn't for their support and a little pushing, especially from Tassie, I wouldn't have even applied for the TRT job at Whispering Forest three years ago, where I was able to work with Mr. Sacks and Ms. Connor, who just happened to have been my sixth grade English teacher at Clearwood just a few years ago. Because of their confidence, I was able to apply for the parishwide Assistant Principal job, which has been such a rewarding experience. I was able to work with phenomenal leaders like Dr. April Owens and Kelly Ainsworth at Bonney Cole, Mr. Alfred Kimberley Blanks and Lisa Pye at Abney Elementary, and again with Mr. Sacks and Ms. Connor at Whispering Forest. All of these administrators, along with their faculty and staff, welcomed me and gave me great advice and direction. I would like to end by thanking Mr. Sacks and Ms. Connor again, and the entire faculty and staff, sorry, at Whispering Forest, for all their cooperation, kindness, and support. I have big shoes to fill, but I'm proud and happy to do it as I look forward to many wonderful years at Whispering Forest, thank you.
Mimi, congratulations, and we look forward to working with you, this is a gift for my fellow school board members, myself and Superintendent Foles, and we, I think you've had, I think this is your second one, isn't it? I thought so!
She's going to give that one to her husband and let him read it.
That's right, that's right.
I thought that when I came down here, I was like, wait a minute, I've given her one. I just want you to know that Whispering Forest has a wonderful leader in Mr. Sacks, outstanding teachers, precious students, and you're going to make a perfect fit, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Heintz, if I could, tonight, what you've seen are the six people that were chosen in these positions, but many of you had the opportunity to sit in with us on the interviews, and I can tell you that these six are very, very strong candidates and will do a great job in our school, but I can also tell you there were many people that applied for these positions, that did not get them this time, that also have bright careers ahead of them in our school system and administrative positions, so we compliment each one that applied and excited about the opportunities for them, and also just to say, I think it's nice to hear the success of the parishwide program and the people that have been in that before, and the experiences that gave them, it's encouraged them, we were able to get that back into the budget, and I think it would certainly pay benefits for the school system as we move forward, so we congratulate these six and also encourage all of them, as they weren't chosen, to continue after that administrative position, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foles, good luck to you all. That brings us to item J on our agenda, which is the approval of the recommendations from the committee as a whole, Business Affairs and Administrative Meeting, held on May first, two thousand fourteen. Mr. Durman.
Thank you, Ms. Heintz, I was just going to listen to you read them, actually, but...
Your turn.
We have the following recommendations, number one recommends acceptance of the addendum to the intergovernmental agreement by and between Saint Tammany Parish School Board and the Saint Tammany Parish Sheriff's Office.
Do I have a motion, all right, Ms. Sealy gives a motion, and a second by Mr. Jeter? All right, do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Second recommends acceptance of the increase in food service meal cost.
I have a motion by Mr. Loop, second by Ms. Tipton. Do we have any comments from board members? Do we have any comments from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Ms. Heintz, with this approval tonight, we'll go ahead and start working on our letter, remember we had mentioned to everyone that we would get the letter out soon, so people could start planning for next year, and we also talked about putting it on our website, and the schools putting it on their website as well, so we'll have that going.
Thank you, Mr. Foles, I appreciate that being publicized. Mr. Durman.
The third and final recommendation recommends adoption of the resolution of levying millage rates for tax year two thousand fourteen for a total of sixty-eight point one-eight mils, I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Durman, a second by Ms. Bellisario, Mr. Schluter is here, if anyone has any questions for him. Do we have any questions from board members? Do we have any questions from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So ordered.
Thank you. Mr. Foles, just in conclusion of my little report here, we don't have any more snow days this summer, do we?
No snow days.
Okay, with all these new administrators, I wanted to be sure they knew that they didn't have any days off.
The most applause I got from my graduation speech every night was when I mentioned the three snow days.
Yeah.
They were proud of me for that, the students were appreciative of that.
Yeah, they love snow days.
All right, then that brings us to our next item, which is announcements, we'd like to say congratulations to all Saint Tammany Parish graduates for the class of two thousand fourteen, I think we figured out that we had about two thousand three hundred graduates, which is just a wonderful success for our school system. We would like to thank the students of Fountain Blue High School for their beautiful artwork in the atrium this month, their art elective teacher is Ms. Cheryl Alak. We would also like to thank the Abney Elementary Actors Guild for the entertainment in the atrium before the board meeting, the Actors Guild is under the direction of teachers Dammy O. Oenby, Suzanne Cole, with technical help from PE teacher Brian Donnelly, and violin instructor Jeb Stewart, and it was really a very charming program this evening. All school board offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-sixth, in observance of Memorial Day. The board will meet on Thursday, June fifth, two thousand fourteen, for the Human Resources Education and Business Affairs Administrative Committee as a whole meeting. I'd like to now call an executive session, it's been requested pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statutes forty-two, colon, seventeen, A, two, to discuss the litigation that's listed at the bottom of the agenda, do I have a motion to go in executive session? Motion by Mr. Bettencourt, a second by Ms. Sealy, any comments from the board, comments from the public, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? We are now in executive session, thank you for doing.